Mayor, you can hang around in the cul-de-sac over down there in the Campbell house.
A much bigger version of it, but it's like an appendage to him.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And the mother and father passed away across the street.
Yeah, Michael will get it with.
Scott lives across the street. Scott and the good daughter.
Hi Fred.
Anne Marie.
All right, thank you.
He's up, stay up to Long Island, Connecticut somewhere.
There's a nice rescue place in Harrison.
Yeah, good. It's awesome. New York Pet Rescue, that's great.
Next door to me is the mother and father after they grew up.
Michael, no problem on that.
And of course, street from then.
All right, can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, June 13th. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed PBA negotiations. Before we start with our regular business, we are very lucky to have the presence of the honorable George Latimer, County Executive for the County of Westchester, who would like to say a few words. So we please welcome you to the dais.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, to all the members of the Board of Trustees and the other key staff people who are here. I asked the mayor for the opportunity to come by to address you very briefly on the migrant asylum seekers issue. It's very much the issue of the day. And while we communicate in group meetings and webexes and things of that nature, I'm making it a point of going to each of the different towns, villages, and cities in person to give you an update as to where we are as of this moment in time, knowing that this is very much a work in progress. You're aware that what the process has been, there's been a tremendous surge of asylum seekers at the border, the southern border, which is primarily Texas, to some extent Florida, California, Arizona, and New Mexico. That surge has individuals who have legally sought asylum in the United States by going to immigration officials, they've registered with them, gone through some initial vetting, and then are now awaiting adjudication in the immigration court, which we're told is backed up beyond what we can even imagine, more than a year in wait for a case to come up. And all of those individuals have been primarily at the southern border, primarily in Texas. A number of months ago, over a year ago, the Texas governor made the decision to start busing out some of those individuals to have them await their time. And he has chosen to send quite a lot of them to New York City. New York City has a shelter in place law. He did not send them equally around the country, down the states. Some California, Massachusetts, if there's a pattern, we'll have to have that discussion outside of a nonpartisan setting. But be that as it may, they've come into New York City over the last year. Mayor Adams has taken on the responsibility to deal with them with basic needs, food and room and board, if you would, and reached a point about a month and a half ago where he could not accommodate that within New York City. And so, New York City began the process of seeking hotels, motels outside of New York City to house the migrants. They legally have the authority to do that. Neither the village, the town, the city, nor the county have any direct role in approving that or not. At the time that the first placement started to occur in Rockland County, my counterpart was very vigorous in opposition, of course, you know, took the positions that he took. You know what he had to say about it. A number of other executives issued executive orders prohibiting this. I did not do that because I knew those executive orders were not legal, and that subsequently been thrown out by a federal judge. So we've taken the attitude in Westchester County that we will work with our neighbor, and within reason, the reason is a certain amount of volume that we can handle, that we will try to work with the city of New York where there are placements. As of this moment in time, there are three placements in Westchester County. The one of longest duration is about three weeks now in Yonkers, South Ramada Inn on Tuckahoe Road. There's the largest placement of individuals, there's 60 guest rooms, 58 guest rooms, and it roughly ranges about three people per guest room. Generally, those who have been placed in Westchester are either a single individual or a husband and wife, or a husband and wife with one child who is under school education age. And so, in round numbers, about 60 units in Yonkers. The second placement came a little over a week ago at a motel on Central Avenue in White Plains, right on the White Plains-Greenberg border, you know, south of where the county center is, south of city limits, north of where those strip malls are on the west side of the road. And that is about 30 rooms placed. And then there's a, it was a placement as of this past weekend of 25 rooms in the Ardsley-Akers Motel, which is off of 9A in Ardsley, right next to the New York State thruway. So those three locations are the only three where migrant asylum seekers have been placed in Westchester County. We deal in a world of rumors, which people have speculated, and they've been doing this now for months, in fact, years. I've been in contact with the village administrator more than once to swat away rumors that there were people being housed at Arrowood, which is uninhabitable, or at the old Rye Town Hilton, which is empty, except for a catering operation that's there. I check with the chief of police every so often, just to make sure that his people verify that what I believe to be true is true. That doesn't stop the rumors, but the reality of it is, there are no other placements from New York City of migrant asylum seekers in Westchester County at this time. They have a placement in Poughkeepsie, they have a placement in Newburgh, they have a placement in the town of Colony, which is outside of Albany, we're trying to monitor where else they go. And then, of course, you know, we'll see what happens in the days to come. This is a problem that requires a federal solution. There's nothing that you or I, or even our state officials, can do to solve the underlying problem. But as long as that underlying problem is unaddressed, there are certain things we've asked for. We've asked the federal government to establish an immigration court satellite in the White Plains Federal Courthouse, which exists. We believe that if you're going to house those migrants outside of the border in Texas, then you need to have immigration courts near where they are, and to prioritize those cases, because you do not want people sitting in any motel or hotel room for a year, two years, that's untenable. And things that can be managed in the first month will be unmanageable in a year or two years, if that were to be the case. So we've called for a satellite court, and we've also called, and everyone has done this, I mean, the governor and others as well, has called for the feds to move up the work permit waiting period from a half a year to now, so that many of these people who want to work, we've had people there interviewing them from organizations like West Tab and Neighbors Link, and they said that these people who have come in legally are following the rules that they're given, because they want to be here, and they want to work, and they want a better life than they had in their native country. By the way, not all of the immigrants are from Latin America, there are immigrants from other parts of the world as well, that have come through the southern border. Nonetheless, we have not yet gotten approval for advanced work permits, if that does happen. I think we all know that there are certain entry level jobs in this society that go unfilled, in diners, kitchen help, and in gardening, and agricultural settings where there's, there are positions available for entry level. We don't espouse them as the greatest jobs in the world, but they're necessary jobs, and those who are here awaiting adjudication would be glad to do them. So we hope to resolve that portion of it. I don't know how long we're in for. Five years ago, in 2018, Westchester housed over 1,000 migrant children. You may remember, at that time, the Trump administration was in office, and they had the policy of taking children away from parents at the border and separating them. I don't know if they've ever been reunited. But at one point in time, we had 1,000 migrant childrens housed in Westchester County in four different locations. So we have already been through this at some level, 1,000, and in four locations. So where we are now, a little less than 250 overall, we're not yet at that point. Once again, in a, in a, in a setting that is not a nonpartisan setting, there would be other things to be said about this, but you know, the agitation that exists now is greater because of that reality, so we are trying to manage this as best as we can. From a Ry Brook standpoint, I've talked to the village administrator, I think it's important that, that what you have, what your building inspector knows is about the uninhabitable nature of Arrowood is clearly understood by everybody, because it is not understood by everybody. People think that the last time they were there, three years ago, whatever, is the way it is today, and therefore, it could be a housing place for migrants. Rye Town Hilton is a different situation, and there you have direct contact with the owner of that facility, who has some plans before the village to do other things with that. And many of the hotels in Westchester County have not contracted for migrants because of their business market. They have either catering business, and they don't want to mix that. So it has been the coalition of the willing. Those, those entities that are, you know, in the marketing, in the market area of hotels are marketed at a certain level, are the ones that have been willing to contract with New York City, but it's not mandatory. So I don't expect to see, you know, some of the other major hotels go in this direction, but there would be other ones in Westchester that might yet go that way. My, my team has put together now a weekly call with those communities that have placements, so we can discuss what's happening and best practices. And through our monthly municipal call, which the mayor and the village administrator or their designee attends, we will try to update you, so we know what, you know, what we know elsewhere in the county, so you know it as well. And certainly, if anything happens in a Ry Brook context, then we'll be in immediate dialogue. If, if such a thing were to happen, we'll do the same thing with any community that we've done so far, which is bring county resources to assist the local government, as appropriately as we do normally in policing, where, where the local village police feels they need an assist from the county police, we're prepared to do that. We're certainly prepared to put in health professionals. And then, some of the things that have to be done are not done through the government, but there has to be an organized process. People who want to make donations, people who want to help teach language services, lawyers who want to donate time to help the, those here with their applications for things, all of those would be coordinated in some fashion. So that's the basic report that I wanted to give you. I know you have lots of business tonight. Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to you if you want me to take some questions, I'll do that if you'd like. If not, I'm always available at some other time to, to consult with you. But I wanted to make sure you do that, you do it from the horse's mouth. And I plan to do this, and I've done a few communities, I plan to do this in every community in Westchester, to let you know that we are, we're trying to be on top of the situation, we're trying to manage this thing properly, and we're communicating with local governments on the topic.
Well, first off, I'd just say, you know, that we truly appreciate you coming here to talk to us about this. You've always been a great supporter of Ry Brook in your previous posts, and we thank you for that, and for your continued service to Westchester and Ry Brook. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I pretty much said everything.
I actually have a question. Thanks, George, for everything. So, in terms of resources, like, who is providing the migrants with, like, their daily needs, like, food? And is New York City funding all this? Like, is that included in the contract, or?
Well, New York City, Stephanie, is, is paying for the overnight accommodations, and they're providing three meals that are trucked in by the service organization that, that they've contracted with. Doc Go is the name of the organization. In Yonkers, and Yonkers being a large city with certain resources, they have contracted with West Tab to manage the municipal side of the arrangements with the, with, with the asylum seekers who are headquartered there. And West Tab, as they do for managing other types of facilities, is the link to provide language services, a lot of the soft services, the laundry issues, things of that nature. We have indicated to the other two, which are newer in implementation, White Plains and Ardsley, Ardsley in particular is a very small municipality, much more analogous to Ry Brook in terms of their resources, that the county would step in to do certain types of things in, outside of food, room, and board. And we mentioned that we're concerned about the education piece, because we know that in New York City, the city government controls the education. Out in the suburbs here, every community's got their own school board. Not every district has the same level of ESL education, so we're not able to do exactly what New York City could do consistently. So we've asked, you know, when you're referring or placing people out here, try not to make them school-aged children, because we will have a problem. And these are, these are children who do not have fluency in English at all, they're starting at base zero. Now, other children do come into our counties in other ways that also have that situation, but if you get an influx of 20 kids in one setting, I don't know how any school district is going to handle that easily, it's going to be, it's going to be a real problem. So we've tried to encourage them to move away from that. The cost factors of, of basic living expenses are handled by New York City, but that's all they're covering, and so now we see what other kinds of ancillary needs there may be. Some of those needs may be symbolic donations, such as additional clothing. We don't know how much a migrant has on them in clothing, when they made these unbelievable walks through, you know, Latin America to come to the border. So that may be something, whether you have little babies, diapers, and the necessities formula for, all those kinds of things. We're going to try to work through the non-governmental sources for donations. But we've also shared, and New York City has this problem, and you've, you've read the newspaper, how Mayor Adams has been, you know, talking to Washington DC decision-makers, that New York City's resources are limited, they're huge, but they're limited. And at some point in time, this influx is going to exceed what New York City can do. And then, when New York City can't do it, then we're in a real problem, because Westchester does not have the resources to do it over any extended length of time. You know, we have a fire, and somebody is without a home, we can house them in a hotel for a couple of days, an apartment building full of people, but after a couple of days, our resources run out. We certainly can't do this over a month, two months, three months. So I honestly don't know what the longer term picture of this is, I just know in the short term, New York City's providing these level of services, we have these wraparound services, and then we're trying to get volunteer services to provide some of those extra other services that are needed. And it's a work in progress.
Has the state or the federal government given any funding?
Well, I, I can't say what the federal government has done, I've, I've yet to see any example of that. New York State, in the budget that was passed, excuse me, just recently, added a billion dollars in funding overall, that's a lot of money, but the New York City presence could be 50,000 of these, of these asylum seekers compared to less than 250 in Westchester, probably similar numbers in a few other out locations. So I'm not sure how that process works. You know, we've talked to state officials, and it's been my position that the state should really take over the responsibilities that New York City has right now. New York City can fund them, but in terms of the organization of it, because you see the opposition that happens, you go into a county that does not want them here, and, and they put up roadblocks, and while they get placed, the, the services don't work smoothly. Here, at least, our mindset is to work as cooperatively as we can. And, and look, that's not uncontroversial. I've had a number of people challenge me very directly on the decisions I've made so far. I think I'm doing the right thing, and I'm willing to defend that, but I cannot deny that in this society, it is not a unanimous feeling. It's, you know, it's, you know, it's a significant number of people that do not want migrants here at all, and so, any action toward assisting them, they find negative. And of course, that's why we have democracy debates and elections, you know, decide.
I just want to thank George for the communication, the level, you always do that on all these topics, but, you know, once again, you've always been a great communicator on, you know, what your position is, what the county's role is, and, you know, and how different people can help and be prepared, and also trying to get the right facts out there. So thank you for your leadership, thank you for the communication. Couple quick questions. One is, are you hearing any movement from the federal government? Because the key is obviously that waiting period. Are you hearing any positive discussion going on that you think that that may get, you know, grow legs a little bit? And, you know, that's obviously such a key part of this whole thing.
We're hoping to hear from Senator Schumer's office in the next, I think, 48 hours. We were told we would have dialogue with his office, or him personally, a little later in the week. Obviously, he is a very powerful legislator, but he's not an executive, and he has the ability to influence the executive branch, but not necessarily direct it. And he certainly understands what we can see, and the other congressmembers that represent us are also, you know, in the same place. But we've not seen the movement yet that we need to see. And, you know, I, you know, it's, it's a little early yet to be completely frustrated, but I would think that I would see a different response in, in Washington, given the nature of this thing. But, you know, it's been out there for a long time in Texas, and then in New York City for a long time, so I'm afraid the disagreement over what to do with immigration is really at the core of this, that there are two different philosophies, and they are, they are roughly in equal balance in Washington. And, you know, with that has, you get a, a static situation, no movement positively or otherwise.
And obviously, without getting into the politics of it, the, some of, again, just clearing up facts, all the people that have come through this program are here illegally. So that people think that it's, it's illegal, people coming in. All the people that are, have been, are being relocated are all being done in a legal way at this point.
They have come to the United States seeking the opportunity to come here as an asylum from their home country, and then the presumption is, is they would be here as a legal visitor to the country, and then at some point in time would go through some process of citizenship. That is completely different from a person who sneaks into the country, disappears, and, you know, for whatever reason, I mean, probably the same reason, but is undocumented, isn't seeking to be documented, is working off the books, and, you know, doing what they have to do. So, you know, the, the emotional nature of it is people are generalizing. There have been no incidents of crime, significant incidents of crime, certainly none in Westchester at all, and no significant incidents of crime, but people will say, this, these are bad people, these are thugs, these are murderers and rapists and things of that nature, because that's what they feel it is, or they've been motivated to say that by what they've heard. And this is part of the battle that we fight, which is what is actually happening and what is perceived to be happening by people.
Thank you.
Yes, David.
What is the status of the executive declarations issued by some of your colleagues in other counties, where they just said, sorry, we can't possibly?
They've been ruled unconstitutional by Judge, I forget the judge's name, a federal judge, recently. There was a lawsuit against the Rockland and the Orange executive orders, and, and he ruled that they were unconstitutional. I assume they're on appeal at some federal level above him. But, you know, at the time that, that the first two came out, and I know all of these county executives, we, we just worked together a couple of weeks ago in a whole text statement, cooperatively, bipartisanly. So when this came out, and they, they took the position they did, you know, I, I wasn't going to do it anyway, but I talked to our county attorney, he researched, and he said, no, these are, these are illegal. But they have a force of power in the minds of people, and people who dislike the idea of migrants being placed here, see the executive order, and they think you're acting boldly to do something to stop this, when in fact, it's had no effect in stopping anything. The, the Orange and the Duchess County placements were done in opposition to those executive orders. So now the executive orders have been ruled unconstitutional, which is what I thought they were in the first place. Yes?
Is there anything that Westchester residents, or in particular Ry Brook residents, can do to help? They're typically very philanthropic, is there a need that we can help you?
I would hope, Susan, in the next week to two weeks at the most, there'll be a structure for donations established that would be publicly circulated, and then it would be up to any of us to use whatever mechanisms we can. I mean, will there be a press release that will go out to the Westmore News? I mean, will there be a press release that will go out to the Westmore News and the other media outlets? People can, you know, circulate it on social media as they see fit or through, you know, email chains, through House of Worship or something of that nature. But there there would be some structure where we would say, if you want to donate, here are the things that are needed. And if you want to donate them, here is where you can, you know, drop them off. And ideally, you know, and a local organization would take on that responsibility. Some not-for-profit based here in the town of Rye might say, bring them to us here. And then we will take them to the county center where there's a larger, you know, collection of them. And then the organizations that are managing these things will then bring them and, you know, circulate them out. One of the things that we don't want is we don't want people to start donating yet because we don't know exactly what the needs are. And someone might say, I think they need this, and then immediately drop off at the front door of one of these places lots of something that may or may not be what's needed at the time. So that's why I say I think it's gonna take us about two weeks to get a good handle on this. And when we do, we'll and we'll certainly share it with you as, you know, elected officials and we'll share it in the general public. And we have some some logical mechanism of how that philanthropic feeling can be expressed.
Thank you.
I feel very guilty that I'm eating into your normal time and the other issues that people are here for. So I'm gonna self-control, but invite any follow-up from the mayor or from the administrator, any any individual here. And feel free to reach out to me as we go forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time to come to us and explain this and for clearly all the thought and and that you've gone, that you've put into it and how you're staying on top of it. We really, really appreciate it.
We'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are going to start with our first item, which is a public hearing, public hearing number one. Public hearing on a proposed fire services protection agreement between the village of Rybrook and the village of Porchester. So can I have, do we have to read the resolution first?
Oh, you should open the, no.
Yeah, so can I, can I get a motion in second to open the public hearing, please?
Second.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. All right, so this is regard, well, Chris, why don't you give a little background? This is regarding an an extension of the agreement between the village of Rybrook and the village of Porchester.
Yeah, so we have a long, long history of working with Porchester, provide automatic fire service to Rybrook. That's in addition to our paid staff. Our paid firefighters are here in Rybrook. So as everyone knows, we have a Rybrook Fire Department and we have a an existing contract with Porchester and the it's worked out very well for many, many decades. This is a renewal. The the contracts typically are done for five years, and this is a proposed five-year agreement. The agreement establishes basic terms in terms of what types of calls, what type of apparatus comes based on the calls. Also, you know, makes it clear that the Porchester Fire Chiefs are in charge from a fire operations standpoint. And also it provides, you know, a lot more information about the fire, a fire advisory board is established to maintain communications from the elected and and administrative professionals for fire service discussions. And what's before the board now for a public hearing is a proposed five-year agreement. And it basically is an agreement that increases fourteen thousand three seventy, three hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, which results in an increase between one point nine five and two point one one, depending on the year.
Okay, what?
All right, continue, Chris.
And so that's the, basically, that's the the basic terms of the agreement. And, hold on, let me take one second.
Yeah.
And then basically, that's after the village board approves the agreement, then it needs to be approved by the Porchester Village Board after a public hearing there, as well as the seven companies in the fire department.
No, I'm seeing different amounts here.
Open it on OneDrive or how do you open it?
It works.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay. No, I'm done.
Is that it? You're done? Okay. All right. So we we do appreciate working with the village of Porchester on this. This was, you know, this is obviously mutually beneficial. And we look forward to continuing this another five years and hopefully long thereafter. Any questions or comments from the public, as this is a public hearing? Any questions or comments from the board?
Good job on whoever negotiated this.
Well, it was, this is, this was mutual negotiation. It was Chris and myself and the mayor of Porchester and the Porchester village administrator, so Louis and Stuart. And it was very cordial. It was very nice.
Yep.
And we really appreciate that.
Do we anticipate any problems with the fire companies in Porchester?
Not anticipating that now.
So, yeah, no, not, we don't anticipate any, no. Okay, can I have a motion in second to close the public hearing, please?
Motion?
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Let's move right into the resolution. Resolution number one, considering an agreement with the village of Porchester for fire protection services.
Whereas the Board of Trustees desires to enter into a renewal of a five-year fire protection agreement with the village of Porchester, beginning retroactively on June first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Rybrook and Porchester desire to continue their cooperative relationship and longstanding history of shared services, they therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves a five-year fire protection agreement with the village of Porchester, beginning retroactively on June first, two thousand twenty-three. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Motion?
Second.
All right, once again, we thank the village of Porchester for working with us on this and we look forward to a very fruitful relationship.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Hyzer?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number two, considering an appeal of an address change by the Superintendent of Public Works at four Elm Hill Drive.
Whereas two Elm, two Elm Hill Drive in Rybrook, New York was changed to a three-plot subdivision, requiring new addresses to be issued by the Superintendent of Public Works. And whereas the Superintendent of Public Works determined it was necessary to change four Elm Hill Drive, New York, to eight Elm Hill Drive. And whereas the Superintendent of Public Works has notified sixty Control and all parties of the address changes. And whereas David Cron of currently four Elm Hill Drive emailed the Superintendent of Public Works on June first, two thousand twenty-three, expressing his concern with the address change and his desire for the change to be reversed. And whereas in accordance with the village code, David Cron requested an appeal of the address change to the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees. They therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either approves or disapproves the address appeal by David Cron of four Elm Hill Drive reversing the change from eight Elm Hill Drive.
Thank you, Chris. We're gonna hold off on a motion in second till we have, till we have conversation and?
If you can make a motion in second and then just pick one and then we'll vote on that.
Okay, all right. So could I have a motion in second, please?
Second.
And then we may have to do it again in this?
Yep.
Okay, Michael?
And I apologize if I didn't get your name right.
Do you want to, okay, so would you like to come up? Just please introduce yourself and state your address.
I'm David Cron, current resident. My family and I live at four Elm Hill Drive. So like you stated, you know, we received a letter in the mail dated May nineteenth that our address will be changing from four to eight because two Elm Hill Drive is being split into three properties with two on Elm Hill Drive. So the new numbering with the the two new lots plus ours would be four, six and eight. I expressed an email to Michael that I'm concerned that this will cause confusion with emergency services, which is the the issue we're trying to resolve. So if you come from the north end of Elm Hill Drive, you're gonna be going past fourteen, twelve, ten, and then you get to six, which is actually a Horseshoe Lane address. But the driveway and the mailbox and the number on the house faces Elm Hill Drive. So you're going fourteen, ten, and then you get to six, and you're gonna have to go past six to get to my house at eight. So that, to me, causes confusion. I think there's cleaner ways to solve this issue. If it were up to me, it would be two A and two B or two and two and a half at the existing two Elm Hill Drive address, and we would stay at four and everything would be in order. I I've looked through the code and I I don't think it is restrictive to being able to use numbers and half or half numbers and letters in the street address. And there are other instances in Rybrook where there are street addresses with half numbers and letters in the actual street address, not a unit number. So I think that's a cleaner solution. That's what I would hope we would do. But I I guess that's that's all I have to say. Those are basically my thoughts, so I'll leave it up to you guys.
Want to have, might be easier if if Michael comes up and kind of puts on the screen, too, just so everyone can look at the same thing.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, because we're looking at maps here. We're looking at things.
We could put on the screens, everyone would see the same stuff.
Backup material here.
These are just photos of?
We'll take anything you want to hand out. We can, I can hand out.
Mr. Cron, if I understood you correctly, one of the things that concerns you is you're going from fourteen, twelve, ten, then you go to six and then to eight.
Yes.
Would it make you happier if you were, let's say, number six and what is now six became eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So where do we stand currently?
This is so confusing. This is not, this is not Elm Hill.
I do, there is, you know, I think it's gonna be?
If we pull up on the maps, it'd be easier. If this way everyone looks at the same?
It's gonna be confusing, not for emergency services, but for for other reasons to switch four to another.
I know, I know. You bought the Alvala house? You bought the Alvala house?
But Maishy doesn't do that.
Should.
Yeah, I know.
Hill and Dale?
I know all these houses.
I'm on thirty-seven across the street lane.
No, they they outpace each other, but on your side, it'll escalate.
So what happens when there's a new house? What do they do?
It's a better setup.
It's usually blank space.
And there's and there's a spot there, then you just have to know.
They want to change him.
If there's, sometimes it fits, sometimes it's the end of the road and you can just add a number.
If it's an end of the road, it's different, but also sometimes it's factored into the numbering. When they redid it in the nineties or whenever it was with the?
Want to just walk through kind of the situation, Michael?
Hi, yes, Michael, please.
So good evening, members of the board. As mentioned, the old Elm Hill estate was subdivided into three. And here's an example of the plot plan and the subdivision in the plan that shows the existing house and the three lots.
Show where Elm Hill is on that.
So Elm Hill?
You can draw on the map.
Yeah.
It's right over here.
That's Elm Hill.
As you see, that that's Elm Hill. Okay, and so you had an existing house over here that was number two, and that got knocked down. And now the lot got subdivided. So obviously, we have to renumber it because house number four is over here. And now you have two lots that need to make up the difference in the numbering routine. So in conversation with staff, we went back and we revisited this and tried to come up with a numbering plan that would satisfy the neighborhood and and follow the logic on the street. So in speaking with staff, we came up with, as you see over here, proposing a number four Elm Hill Drive, proposing a number six Elm Hill Drive and renumbering the existing four to eight Elm Hill Drive. And the rationale behind that, let me clear this out, sorry. The rationale behind that, I can't clear it. The rationale behind that?
Bottom left is undue.
Oh, here you go. There you go. So the rationale was that this address, six Horseshoe Lane, the house fronts Horseshoe Lane. So the addresses are always assigned to where the house fronts, what street the house fronts on, irregardless of where the mailbox is. A mailbox is not a legal designation of address. Mailboxes in the right of way are courtesy. They're not a right, okay? So as a result, we didn't want to have a six Elm Hill opposite of a six Horseshoe Lane because that's only gonna cause a fiasco moving forward. So hence why number eight was proposed for this lot here. And and six Horseshoe may be numbered on that side, on the driveway side over here, but the house is sitting here with the front door facing here. Okay, so your main entrance into the house is on Horseshoe. So as a result, that that, sorry, as a result, that was the numbering routine that was proposed to keep everything in in sequence and in order. And and subsequently, I spoke with the chief about this. And we did have a conversation about this and he was in agreement about the logic behind it. There was a conversation with sixty Control, nine-one-one about this. And they also were in concurrence about this numbering routine and were in agreement. They do not propose or favor half numbers or letters if there is a opportunity to do whole numbers and continue. We do have some halves in the villages, but that's rare cases. I know on Windingwood, we have a half that got snuck in there, but that's not a norm. And if there's a case where we could do whole numbers, we try to do whole numbers and keep it in a consistent fashion.
Michael, I ask you a question. Why is there no two anymore?
Because then it would be two, four, six.
And then six would be across from Horseshoe.
I don't want the two sixes opposite of each other, so then this would be a six Elm Hill and this would be a six Horseshoe a hundred feet apart from each other. So UPS and FedEx are gonna, and once again, no disrespect to UPS, FedEx, no disrespect here, so sorry. But let's be honest, mistakes like that will happen.
I mean, they happen anyway.
So that's why we try, we try not to put two sixes a hundred feet opposite on two separate roads, even though they're literally right there on the same corner.
Right, that does make sense.
Is there a one in a three Elm Hill?
On the opposite side.
I s- I see.
So our code distinguishes what is odd, what is even east.
There is a one around the corner from two, oh, yeah, down there.
Yeah, that's my elf.
But there's no three. Is there a three?
Correct, but our code requires even on one side, odd on the other, so we cannot put an odd number on this side. Has to be even on this side.
And that's what the?
What are other options that you explored, like just out of curiosity?
We tried a different number routines. We try not to assign a zero to a house number as well because that's just an issue. That could be a issue with computers, that could be an issue for other reasons. So we literally stick to whole numbers as much as possible, and this is what made sense. We try not to do halves and letters if we don't have to.
I said, I think I shared with the board, I, you know, I was a nine-one-one coordinator in the city of Rye for in the nineties when it was, E nine-one-one was implemented. I could tell you in Rye, we didn't use halves ever. So that was, that was something that was, it's very, it can be very confusing for the emergency services particularly, which is the primary reason and the primary concern.
Because halves are usually snuck in there when there's no room for additional lots or or when there was no forethought in the numbering or no one expected a subdivision like here. Nobody fathomed that this would be turned into two lots. So there was no numbering routine back then to say, hey, this may be split, let's do it number four and let's bank a number two. There was no such thought. And because, I mean, let's be honest, eighty years ago, fifty years ago, no one thought of that, you know?
And it it is certainly an inconvenience, and we should say, the the one controlling factor for the property, just keep in mind, is always the section block and lot. So legally, that's what's referred to on your deed, that's what's referred to as a section block and lot.
Correct. So all your files with county land records, county assessors, all by section block and lot. They're not tied in by?
Right, so his title to his house, et cetera, will always be?
Yeah, section block and lot.
But there, there, is there a cost incurred to the homeowner?
Well, the cost of the number on the house, obviously.
That's, that's not what I'm talking about, to correct it with the title and everything else.
The biggest issue is inconvenience. It's, you know, letting?
He has to change the title for any reason.
No, no, the legal documents are all fall back to SBL.
So we're not changing the section block and lot of the property?
Okay. Okay.
Michael, is four Elm, which way is the front entrance to that house? I know the driveway, you sure? I know the driveway's on Elm, but the house is.
The house actually faces Elm Hill.
It faces Elm Hill too? The front entrance does? Yep.
Yeah, it's right here.
Michael, would the world come to an end if two houses became two and six and he could keep four? I know it's out of order and I realize that that makes.
That throws everything out of order then.
Not everything. It throws one house out of order.
But for emergency response, you're overshooting.
I would highly recommend the board not do that.
I'd rather not.
I guess I haven't heard the the issue I raised addressed, that emergency responders would be going past six to get to eight.
Well, he just, you asked sixty control, you went over with them and they.
I understand that it's on a different street, but it appears to be on Elm Hill Drive. If you're an emergency responder, you're not gonna stop and investigate which street that house is on. So it does create confusion to go twelve, ten, six, eight. And then just one other option was that that new house on the corner, I know, like one Old Oak Road does front on Elm Hill. It faces Elm Hill, but it has an Old Oak address. I know there are instances where that happens. But the new one on the corner that was two Elm Hill Drive beyond Betsy Brown, and then we just do two and four. It's, you know, it's unorthodox. It's not how things are normally done. But there's plenty of, that's the end of Betsy Brown. You can go up to infinity. And then you just have two and four stay the same, basically.
I think, well, we have to work within what our code allows and what our code states.
You gotta refer.
One Old Oak is facing Elm Hill.
Yeah.
I know this isn't what what this gentleman would like, but it is an inconvenience, but it tends to be a short term inconvenience. And one thing I would suggest from from an emerg, really what I care about most is emergency services. And I would highly recommend you do it in a numbering sequence that's in order, following the odd and even side. And, you know, that and not use halves. So I do, I I support Michael's recommendation. I know it's an inconvenience. I've been through this a lot of times over over my career. We've done it here in Country Ridge where we had to renumber lots of houses. So it is an inconvenience and I don't discount that, but I do recommend what Michael recommends.
And I understand the concern about renumbering it, Betsy Brown, but think about it from an emergency response perspective. You're pulling up with a fire truck, a ladder truck, you're pulling up with equipment, you're pulling up to a dead end road and you're pulling up to a steep slope with a ladder truck at two in the morning and you're like, oh, wait a minute. There's no entrance here. There's no house here. There's woods. Now you need to back up the rigs, make a three point turn and go up Elm Hill. You know, and reposition your trucks. So these are concerns that we kind of think about, you know, when you respond to a property. And yes, Elm Hill, I'm sorry, Old Oak does front that way. That's an existing lot. That's always been that way, so. I, I, I would strongly request that the board consider this numbering routine in consultation with nine one one and with Westchester County sixty control. They reviewed this and they are in concurrence with this.
Right.
I don't think we have any ability to.
Maybe they should move the driveway.
For what, four Elm?
To Betsy Brown.
I can't, I won't. It's a steep slope.
Mm, they can't.
The truth is, one Old Oak Road.
Has, it would be the same thing.
Is fronting Elm Hill. So the argument does not, I understand what you're saying, but the argument is not holding true here.
Oh, you're right. It does. I know that woman. Citron. I know.
One Elm Hill Drive also fronts onto Betsy Brown.
Right, exactly.
So you have two separate.
There's no rhyme or reason with this street.
So at least I'm trying.
So it's very confusing.
At least I'm trying to stay consistent when I renumber, so I'm trying to keep.
We should, we should consistently stay inconsistent.
Yeah, right.
You don't wanna compound it.
Whoever subdivided Elm Hill should give this gentleman a new number. A beautiful new number.
Yeah. Certainly, I mean, my.
I mean, I don't understand, I feel like we should just do two, four, six. I mean, I don't understand why having six Horseshoe and six Elm Hill. I mean, this whole street is like a jigsaw puzzle.
I understand it though.
Two sixes that close are gonna.
I mean, but that would be the next best option from what you suggested.
Two, four, six.
My personal opinion.
So what's the difference?
But he said he didn't mind if it was six.
I'm just saying is, out of the two, that would be, that would be the sec, that would be the second best recommendation, I'd say.
So I, my personal opinion, I just, I think this is already confusing. We wanna do as little as possible to make it more confusing. I understand the reasonings for this. I understand that sixty control was involved and I think we can't ask for much more than that. I fully understand what kind of inconvenience this may cause for you. I wouldn't have to go through, wanna have to go through this myself. And I think this is an unintended consequence of this subdivision that just was probably never seen, you know, just, you know, as as the application was going through. And as things were, like you said, fifty years ago, whatever, it was done. This is, there's no easy answer here. That's, that's for certain. Yeah, I saw that. That's the, on the hutch? Yeah, Lincoln, north of Lincoln.
No, but at least it's in order.
The first issue I raised with the numbering from the north end.
Yeah.
And sixty control, you know, I I emailed that to Michael, but that issue was not sent to them.
Oh, too bad.
They basically just responded to Michael's email that's in the the packet of information and concurred that they prefer not to have half numbers, which, you know, I don't want half numbers either. That that makes sense, so. I understand that sixty control is like on board with not having half numbers. But they didn't, they didn't hear all the details of this issue.
Can I ask a question, if you don't mind, Mayor? Can I just ask, would you prefer being, if it was two, four, six versus two, four, eight? I know those, neither one of them is your preference, but I'm just trying to see for the board's clarity, would you prefer it be two, four, six or two, four, eight?
I'd rather be eight than six. I think if they're coming the other way and they see a six, they're gonna stop, so. That's, that's worse than eight.
So you'd rather be six than eight?
No, rather be eight. If it was changed.
Because it will be confusing with the poppers, is your point.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the mail would be an issue, but the mail's gonna be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that. That's, that's the rough one.
Just so you know, sixty one Country Ridge gets sixty one Country Ridge circles mail all the time. There's no.
Yeah.
So it happens with numbers, no matter what, so you have a better chance of getting what you deserve by eight.
So if I could just add, everything that the board has here was mailed to sixty control. They did see this diagram as well, so they did see the numbering. And I did speak to Captain Lieutenant DeLeo about it, specifically about the two sixes being opposite of each other. So that was discussed.
What, Michael, what, is there like another example in the village where a new house has been put up where they've had to?
Change.
That you can just give us just.
Sure, Elm Hill across, Hills Point, across the street. One Hills Point was actually, I believe, back in the day, three Hills Point because lot number.
It was subdivided.
This lot here got subdivided into two. I had to go one, I had to go one, three, five or something like that back in the day. So this used to be a different address.
Would you do, would they do a Ridge Street on the, on the two, two family house?
We had the room there to split.
There was numbers break.
Yeah, they jumped.
They jumped.
It was two fifty-nine and we went two fifty-nine, two sixty-three, two sixty-five. So two fifty-nine went to the the house furthest south.
Okay.
So that became two fifty-nine and then the new houses became two sixty-three and.
It was room for them.
It was room for them. Okay.
We had the room in the numbering routines.
Do you remember what happened in Country Ridge when we renumbered there? Were you here then?
That was before me. Yeah, I was in.
I just don't recall the fact behind it.
Numbers in the Country Ridge area that.
I can't remember why we had to renumber.
They leapfrogged because somehow.
Right, south.
Yeah, yeah, duplicate.
I couldn't remember.
Oh, duplicate numbers.
Got it.
Better not to have a duplicate number.
Yeah.
Better not to have to have that fight. Who gets it? Yeah, I have to say, I mean, I've been on this board for over ten years. This is a first.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would hate that too, having to change your address, but I don't even know what else you can do.
Especially when you just moved there last year.
I know.
Been so bad.
Probably still getting the mail of the person before you.
Okay, this'll end that for you.
Now you're not gonna get any mail.
Really? Now you're just gonna have to go for.
Everyone in the neighborhood is gonna get all your mail. Yeah.
Well, you have to, you, yeah, you're postal worker.
There's not even a house there yet. What is gonna happen? There's no house there.
Where?
Four, four Elm Hill isn't built yet.
Six Elm Hill is going up, so they have to put a placard outside or supply with something to note.
Or will they have a mailbox? Like what, if you change his address, where's his mail gonna go if there's no house there?
Postal service.
What do you mean?
Return to sender.
No, the.
So there's, so there's no, if they change his number to eight, and right now there's no house at four cuz they're working on six, there's no mailbox.
So it'll start at eight, yeah.
So his mail, where's it gonna go?
So postal inspector was informed of this as well, so they were informed of this as well.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just know when I moved, all my stuff still kept going to the three eight Lorridge. I used to have to go there all the time to pick it up. Like pack, everything kept getting delivered there.
There's gonna be a little learning curve there with the post office and.
Yeah.
That's correct. So upon review of the appeal and the documentation, our code requires sixty days notice and the letter was sent out with thirty days' notice.
Oh, okay.
So what's the, yeah.
So he had thirty more days of his number.
That we have to, that we don't vote on, that we can't make a decision for another month?
No, it means, just had, you mean you had to provide thirty, sixty days.
By code, sixty days' notice was required. We gave thirty days' notice.
So is a delay of, it was, but if the board overturned it, then we would have to let everybody know again anyhow.
I don't like this though. It is a very confusing area.
Yeah, I feel like that whole place is just like.
A mess.
Yeah.
You got four intersections within three hundred feet of each other, so complicates.
And the reason this all happened, I mean, I don't wanna go on forever, but in the nineties when this was implemented, some communities renumbered the entire communities from top to bottom. And changed everybody's list, so let's just bite the bullet, change everybody once and just do it. And then that cleared up all the stuff. But other communities tried to look at the areas and make it work with some, the best they could. And they didn't change a lot, all the numbers. In other places, it was kind of a hybrid. They, you know, picked areas and tried to do it, or if areas were more agreeable, they would do it. But the right way to do it really back then would have been just do the numbers over and start, start fresh. But but that's a lot, that caused a lot of pain for everybody.
Right.
I would say.
Greg, you were, you were here when, you were here when that, this all went through, right?
Yeah.
It was the driveway, but.
Is that right?
Well, even now on Hillendale, the numbers are all messed up. They don't make any difference, number one.
I think Hillendale's in order, but.
Oh, they let people decide.
Yeah, but this is, this is, he's got a front. Eight hundred and sixty-two or something.
Hillendale, and Hillendale, I think Hillendale does escalate, but they outpace them big time on one side.
On one side, yeah. So probably cuz there's more street room on the other cuz of the curve.
Correct.
Right.
I would say that.
I mean, this is, to me, this is an extremely difficult decision. You know, my, I'm, you know, always going to lean towards, you know, what we hear from our staff. And I think this is, would end up being a major inconvenience for the homeowner, but I'm kind of tempted to deny the appeal. Let everyone else talk.
I don't know, I.
I don't know either.
It's a very confusing street, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And I think that everyone in that area is at risk for EMS and police and fire. I think that most of these addresses, in my opinion, should read not just the number, but the street on it. In other words, if I had a house on Elm Hill, I would say, I am eight Elm Hill. I, because all of, all of them are reading different names.
Like the mailbox?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, to have the, to have the street.
Name on the mailbox. Their number, because this to me is an, this is, there's one Hills Point Lane, one Old Oak and one Elm, all within five houses.
And you'll find this throughout the community, unfortunately, in areas. And it's too bad cuz it should be.
Right, I know, but you cannot help having different intersections so close by. That's just the way it is. But again, I would tell all of these homeowners, they bring themselves at risk, put the number and the street on your box.
I agree.
Right.
Wait, can I ask a question? And I don't know if this is for Mike or Greg. Has there ever been an issue with emergency services in that area, not being able to find the place they needed to go?
But it's been numbered. You know, it was okay.
I mean, but it's all crazy, the numbers.
Right, one Hills Point Lane, one Old Oak, one Elm Hill.
Two Old Oak.
Well, that's cuz the front face is Old Oak.
If the front face is Old Oak, it's okay.
But one Old Oak does not face Old Oak.
We can renumber it.
That's causing more pain for people. I'm, I don't wanna, I'm gonna try and limit this as much as possible.
And by the way, if you tried to renumber that, which is probably why it wasn't renumbered, there's no number to go to.
And it might throw.
It'll throw the rest out into a loop. That's probably why they didn't do it back then.
Why? Why?
Well, cuz lot twenty-one and lot twenty-four here and here are probably gonna throw everything out of a for loop.
So then, everything else needs to be renumbered all the way down the road.
Where's three Elm Hill?
If, if, one Old Oak, you're saying fronts Elm Hill?
Where is three Elm Hill?
Well, yes.
So, so there's, since the next one up is two, there's nowhere to go.
Ha, zero. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh, and it's not there, you said. So they can't do even. Got it.
It has to be even on that side.
Wow. I mean.
I know we're all baffled by this and it's, this is painful, but we do have to make a decision. I hate to.
Yeah, I know. I don't, I don't know. I feel like, if this was me, I'd be like.
Yeah, ex, yep, extremely. Yep. Absolutely.
Who was the second choice? Chris, you had to mention something, another.
It's really just, the two choices recommended is four, six, eight or two, four, six, but the homeowner would prefer eight.
Because of the six across the, yeah.
Is that what you prefer?
What happens is, is this is a six and then this is.
Prefer you the one, but you prefer, you prefer that.
Yeah, right, right. I understand that. Okay, so that's out. That doesn't make any sense.
Like which one would be?
He thinks eight is better than six.
Yeah, well, it makes sense.
Right, so he's gonna go through the pan.
Right, but there's really no way to do four unless it goes out of order and you can't do the halves or the.
Yeah.
You would have, and you don't wanna be out of order. Well.
Well, it's too bad someone didn't just buy that property and stay in that property without subdividing it, because then it would have been a different border.
Yeah, you can't help that. Yeah, that's a good point too.
But he's gonna have to change his mortgage and everything.
It can be two A and two B. The problem is, most people don't like that cuz they feel it's, it sounds like apartment numbers.
I understand, but these are people who don't live there.
I understand, but they, but they will.
But they will.
Well, that's not our problem.
They don't have to buy it.
They did that on one oh nine Lincoln Avenue, and I have to tell you, it is, it's a disaster that there are three houses there. It's A, B, C. It's very confusing. I would not advocate that at all, Lincoln Avenue. They built up on that hill there. And it is, it is not, I don't think it's a way to go. I think, I'm sorry to say.
Do the same thing, that they have an A and they wanna change, but I have to renumber almost the whole street to do that.
Yeah, and my friend lives at that Windingwood, like what is it, forty-nine and a half or something?
Sixty-five, sixty-nine, something like that.
Yeah, it's the craziest thing. I was like, a half?
It sucks, but I don't see any.
I know, I know.
We don't take this lightly. We don't do this. No, this was not done arbitrarily. This was not done without thought and and staff. Not only myself, but Tara in the building department helped a lot with this as well. And she put an effort into this as well to try to come up with ideas, so I applaud her as well for helping me with this. This is hard.
Well, then you guys are making that decision in the next meeting without me.
I, I, I was, uh, just engaging in some speculation. As I want to do, as if we told the developer that two A and two B is under consideration.
Yes, maybe he would put a driveway.
The current number four could be compensated for the lost time that he is about to undergo, to have to change everything. And if A and B is so offensive to people, they might realize, gee, this will bring down the price of what we hoped to sell. Not that I would ever say.
Well, you are on tape here.
I know. I'm well aware.
All right, counsel.
All right, I guess, I guess we have no choice, huh?
Sorry?
I guess we have no choice.
Yeah. All right, so do we need a, I think we.
Well, you had a motion in a second, but I don't think we ever had a vote on.
Okay, so do we need to amend?
No, you.
A motion in a second has amended?
Yep.
All right, so, um, I think where we stand right now is that I would need a motion in a second to amend the resolution as disapproves.
I don't, I still, I still think you should, just, let's make him Betsy Brown, number four.
That's what I wanted to do.
Why don't we just make him Betsy Brown? It doesn't matter where his, where his thing faces, and the emergency services will find it. They've never had an issue. It's all screwy over there. What if we just made that four Elm Hill, like, I don't know, like three forty-six Betsy Brown?
Three forty.
Why can't we do that? No, look, it goes three forty-four, three forty-five, three forty-six.
That's what I would rather do.
Yeah, I would rather do that too. Can we do that?
I don't think you can by our code.
We can.
Yeah, we can.
The board has, again, it's not with our recommendations, but the board has the right to choose different numbers.
I, I'm not gonna go against staff recommendations.
I don't know, I feel like Greg said emergency services have never had a problem finding where they needed to go, and this street's insane. Two Old Oak, five Elm Hill, one, I mean, across the street, it's three different addresses for three different streets. That's so crazy.
So just, just to walk through that scenario. Since there's a change in grade and the driveway fronts Elm Hill Drive. You're gonna have the first, you're gonna turn onto Elm Hill Drive, and the first address on the left is gonna say probably three forty-three Betsy Brown Road.
Yeah.
On the fronting Elm Hill Drive.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Just like Old Oak, just like.
Then the house right next door would say, would say four Elm Hill. That's why I'm just walking through that scenario.
But. But I feel like there's, that's, I feel like there's other places like that.
And I understand your frustration. That's why consistently when I've renumbered them, I paid strict attention to where the house fronts for this reason.
Yeah.
Pulling up to an address once again, three forty-three Betsy Brown, they're gonna pull up.
Yeah.
They're gonna pull up right here.
Like, there's an address.
Ten-foot ladder truck does not back up very nicely during an emergency.
Like, there's an address on the Hill and Dale Circle that is on Woodland and closer to Beachwood. It's across from the circle on the other side.
And we're trying to make a rationale from all the quirkinesses in the village.
Well, I'm just saying.
I think they were, we're losing sight of what the issue is here. I would like to ask the homeowner one question. If there was an emergency, God forbid, what do you think the best way of them finding your house would be in this situation? I know that there's a little bit of pain with changing the number, but given what EMS and the police are saying, do you think that a little bit of pain is worth making sure that it's a safe, uh, safe way to find your home?
Most homeowner to take, I could request the homeowner on, on, on horseshoe, sorry, I keep moving there. I could ask this homeowner to remove the six on Elm Hill off their house.
To put it on the other side.
Elm Hill?
To put it on the other side.
Leave it on that, on the house fronting Elm Hill.
She is, but.
Yes, I mean, cuz there's a six over their driveway.
Change the number, it's where you put the six.
Just putting the six onto the front of the house, not on the side of the house. So I, I understand that.
And also maybe to put horseshoe on their mailbox or something, oh, to help, like, you can request it.
So I think that's, in, in other words, I'm trying to ask him what, from a safety standpoint, I know that I would say it's worth.
Well, most emergency vehicles come from Betsy Brown. That's a gimme.
We're not gonna assume from which side they come, they're gonna come from whichever side they come.
Yeah, I mean, if they're on a call somewhere else, or.
Normal route would be coming from Ridge Street, but of course, if they're coming from another call, you don't know. Yeah. And the police will come from anywhere. Ambulance.
Pine Ridge Park.
Ambulance and fire will come Ridge Street. Most times, police can come from anywhere.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
And I just wanna apologize because, believe me, I don't mean to inconvenience you, but it's hard, so I, I do apologize.
So. Do we have?
So we need a motion to, uh, to make a decision on this, one way or the other. The mayor started it, but we kinda stopped.
Since every suggestion that has come to my brain, I'm next. Not quite sure if we have any choice other than to disapprove the.
Yeah.
Appeal. As, as much as I don't like disapproving the appeal.
Right.
I just don't see an alternative. And, and that's what makes me crazy is when I can't come up.
I know, I know. I know, because I think, and a lot of us are here because we wanna try and solve things and make things. And I think, you know, unfortunately, it's someone who's extremely inconvenienced, but I think it's.
All right, make a motion.
All right, so we have a motion to disapprove. Do we have a second?
We need a second.
I, I still think we should make it three forty-six, or three forty-three, three forty-four.
I cannot second.
I try.
We have one motion on. If nobody else seconds it, then there could be another motion.
Oh, all right.
Do we have a second?
Wait, so I'm just confused.
The motion on the table from Trustee Morino is to basically do what Michael's recommended.
I feel terrible, but I.
I don't like it either.
I do feel terrible, but I think for safety reasons, I think it's something that we should go through it.
So do you second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, can you call the roll? Can you call the roll, please, Greg?
We really are thoughtful on this.
Hit this with, Trustee Epstein? Trustee Fisher?
I really don't wanna vote yes. I would go with three forty-four. I don't think that helps.
All right.
All right, Trustee Heiser?
With great reluctance, I will vote, provided we also spell the name correctly in the resolution.
In the final paragraph.
Got it.
Very least, we can always spell your name correct.
Right, and, and ask that developer to give this man a, a beautiful sign.
Yes.
I don't know if I could legally do that.
I don't think we can legally do that. I don't think we can legally do that either.
We could request, uh, talk to the homeowner, you said, about moving it?
Giving him a, a new number.
What's that?
Uh, Trustee Epstein is asking that.
We can ask.
Ask the developer to give him the homeowner a new house number.
And new mailbox.
We could, we could speak to him, but they could, they could say no.
I just wanna.
And they have every right to say no if they want to.
They can, but we can ask.
If we don't ask, we certainly won't get.
Baby, you're up.
He did.
I, I'm voting yes, cuz, but it sucks.
Yeah.
It does.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
I think that's a legal term.
And Mayor?
Yes, very sorry. And I wish it was something that we can.
And it will, and it's delayed another thirty days for the sixty, if you want to take a fact, so we'll, we'll put that notice out that, you know, it's, it's another thirty days cuz you have a sixty-day time period to implement. You've already appealed, so that's.
Additional thirty days under what would have been the original.
Yeah.
What was originally in the letter?
Five ambulances.
All right.
Sorry.
Uh, resolution number three. Considering an agreement with the Public Employer Risk Management Association, PERMA, right? Uh, for the village's workers' comp program, compensation program.
I need a second cuz I let Michael borrow my, my tablet.
Oh, gotcha, sorry. I can read it.
I got it, I got it.
Those.
I know.
That was horrible.
Those one of the more, those.
That was a hard one.
Oddly.
Hundreds, I did have to do hundreds. Maybe more, a thousand?
No, did nothing wrong.
And his mail's gonna all get lost.
As, as hard as it is, but the, the hard part, the past, people used to have letterheads, people had to have stock that they had to throw out.
Real simple things like EZ Pass, everything you have that has any connection with your address.
It's a lot of time, but what we can do.
Few months, it'll, but a few months, it'll be better for everybody. Unfortunately, it's just, you got, it's a lot of pain to get there.
I, I want to say this one thing.
Definitely a lot of pain to get there.
Yes, it will be pain, but they're only here.
Someplace he doesn't wanna get.
That he didn't create.
Yeah, I feel bad. I really do.
Yeah, that he didn't create.
It's not like, oh, well, okay.
He was easy, he was easy.
He's not happy with the outcome anyway.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
We gave him a choice.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has an agreement with PERMA for the village's workers' compensation program expiring June thirtieth. And whereas PERMA is presented to the village of Rybrook with either a one-year or three-year option to provide workers' compensation coverage. And whereas our risk manager has recommended, if, the, selecting the three-year option, providing the potential for reduced premium cost, premium, and insurance predictability. And whereas the, uh, village of Rybrook desires to continue using PERMA, now therefore be it resolved, that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the three-year contract with PERMA for a workers' comp program for the period July first, two thousand twenty-three, and continuing through July first, two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
That was a lot easier, that motion.
Yeah.
You put us in a spot like that.
But it was, and, and did everyone see that there were the options? The recommendation is to go with the three-year option. I personally agree with that. Chris, anything to add?
No, this is one, um, you know, this is one that would recommend the three, three-year options. Uh, the rates look, the rates look very favorable for where we are right now. Some of it's unpredictable. It'll depend on our loss ratio. But we do have a very active safety program, um, and the rates look, having this kind of predictability in this market is, we think it's a pretty, it's a good place to be right now.
Yeah, and this comes, that's recommended by our contracted risk manager.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
No.
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, and I'm pretty sure I think I know what everyone's looking at here.
Yes.
And.
What's that?
I don't know if. I don't know if Greg can maybe, and maybe you wanna just, there's, there was, uh, an accident on the hutch just south of Ridge Street. It looks like northbound, just south of Ridge Street, and it's heavy. Uh, I know county responded, there are at least three ambulances.
There's five ambulances.
Right now.
Now, so maybe after the meeting, we could get a little update? If you can find anything out, so I'll just say, so that people, cuz it's, right now, it's all over the social media.
Residents, people are blowing it up.
Social media.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
So. Thank you. All right.
I was trying to send it to you, but I don't have.
All right, so.
I just send it to Chris.
Resolution number four, considering renewal of an agreement with the Carver Center for pool services and the use of Garibaldi Park. This one's very exciting.
Okay, whereas the village of Rybrook Recreation Department seeks to renew an agreement for the use of certain pool and related facilities at the Carver Center to support Rybrook Day, Rybrook Day Camp, and whereas the village of Rybrook has the use of Carver Center Pool and related facilities on certain dates in the summer from one to three P M. And whereas in exchange for the Carver Center Pool and Related Facilities at no cost to the village, except for the cost of the lifeguard and water safety instructor, the Carver Center has use of Garibaldi Park for six weeks over the summer, Monday through Friday from ten to three, to hold a sports camp. And whereas both parties wish to renew this agreement, now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate for the execution of said use agreement, to permit use of the Carver Center Pool for the Rybrook Day Camp, and to allow the use of Garibaldi Park for six or seven weeks. How many weeks is there? Uh, in the mornings for the use of the Carver Center Sports Camp, six.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Well, this is exciting to have this back. I know it's been quite a while since we've been doing this.
Couple of years, yeah, we, for, we didn't do it for, during COVID, and then, uh, we didn't do it last year, but we're nice to have this arrangement back again. It's, again, a no-cost agreement where, except for, you know, we have to pay for the lifeguards, which we would have to do. And, um, but they use, they can use Garibaldi Park, we can use the pool for the day camp, and it's really a nice relationship that way.
Sounds like a win-win.
This is absolutely a win-win.
Perfect.
And we're very thankful to be, to be back, and we're glad that the Carver Center is willing to, to enter into this agreement with us again.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering an agreement with the County of Westchester for the use of its firing range facility.
Whereas the village of Rybrook Police Department desires, desires to enter in an agreement with the County of Westchester for the use of its firing range facility. Whereas the County of Westchester requires any municipality requesting the use of the range to have proper insurance, naming the County of Westchester as additionally insured, and a fully executed indemnification agreement, now therefore be it resolved, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorizes an agreement with the County of Westchester for the use of its police firing range facility for the period from execution of the agreement to July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And being further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all necessary documents for the purpose of entering into this agreement.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I have a second.
This is fairly standard. I've never actually seen the range, but I got to see video of it at the police officer graduation.
That's right.
Which was, it, it was, some of those videos were, were very impressive and, and definitely interesting, let's put it that way. Any questions or comments?
I forgot, was there a fee? There's a fee, I'm sure. Is there a fee for this?
Greg, is there a fee for this?
No, we're, no fee.
Even better. Oh, right.
I remember that, yes.
Great.
Good.
Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering an agreement between the village of Rybrook and the New York State Division of Criminal Justice's Domestic Incident Reporting Repository Database. I practiced that one at home.
Whereas DCJS has a Domestic Incident Report Repository Database, which provides information on domestic incidents in the state of New York. And whereas the village of Rybrook Police Department wishes to gain access to the D I R to enhance police department capabilities. And whereas there is no cost associated with this proposed agreement, now therefore be it resolved, that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves an agreement with DCJS for access to its D I R database, we love acronyms in government, to support police department, uh, operations. And being further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering a donation to the village of Portchester for the twenty twenty-three Independence Day celebration and fireworks.
Whereas the village of Portchester will host the two thousand twenty-three Independence Day Celebration on July fourth. and whereas the Village Board would like to continue to assist with this event, now therefore be resolved, that the Village of Rybrook will pay five thousand dollars to the Village of Portchester for its twenty, two thousand twenty-three Independence Day Celebration.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
Some of.
Second.
This, and as Trustee Heiser just pointed out, this was a much easier decision when Hope Klein used to come and, and she would come all dressed up and sing the song.
That's true. That's true.
But I don't think, I don't know if she's on the, that was, that was to the committee, right, or is?
She's on the committee, yeah.
Yeah, she was on the committee, so it was, um, but we, we love the, we love this uh, celebration. We love that it's, that it is both Rybrook and, and Portchester that helped put this on. Um, I grew up actually going to that fireworks celebration, so I love seeing it continue.
We join the next item.
And we certainly see it from plenty of our, our residences, and especially considering that it's just over the border.
Yes.
Any questions, comments?
Absolutely not.
I miss Hope Klein.
Alright.
Trustee Epstein?
Um, yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
We just asked the, the board not to get any action on the next item. We're still reviewing the bids.
Okay, I was gonna say, cause there's nothing there.
We're still reviewing it. This is one we were trying to get on, but we need to do research and we just aren't prepared.
Great, thank you.
We tried to get it done, but we couldn't.
Considering, uh, resolution number nine, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Now therefore be resolved, the Village of Board, Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Chris, can I have a motion second?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, res- resolution number ten. We have two add-ons. Uh, resolution number ten, considering accepting a, now this is a redo, right?
Yeah, they, um.
Considering accepting a donation from Julie B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty to the Friends of Rybrook for sponsorship of the Music in the Park Concert Series.
And the different, the only difference, the same, it's the same amount, but the Julie B. Fee just asked that we identify the individuals.
Okay.
So they, we're just, wanna put it on.
That's very nice.
So the village has received an email dated May eighth from Alison Cunningham, Marketing Manager for Julie B. Fee, offering a donation of forty-five hundred to the Friends of Rybrook to sponsor the village's Music in the Park Concert Series, and whereas the following is a breakdown of Julie B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty's donation, Patricia Holmes, one thousand, Laura DeVita, five hundred, Marcia Rogel, four hundred, Julie B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty, twenty-six hundred, and whereas the Village of Rybrook is interested in accepting this donation, now therefore be resolved, the Village of Rybrook, acting as the Friends of Rybrook, hereby accepts the total donation of forty-five hundred from Julie B. Fee Sotheby's International Realty for sponsorship of the Music in the Park Concert Series.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, well, it, this certainly does make a difference in that we just had the lumps on before, and it's really incredible to see what these individuals are giving as well, that it's not just coming from the company itself. So we thank uh, Patricia Holmes, Laura DeVita, and Marcia Rogel, as well as Julie B. Fee Sotheby's uh, for their donations for the music uh, in the park series.
Yeah.
Yes. So nice.
And just so you know, Patty Holmes is a new resident in Rybrook. Um, she has worked for Julie B. Fee Sotheby's for a very long time, but she moved here, so I want to uh, welcome her.
Well, welcome and thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for donate, for your donation.
And I'm assuming she'll be there.
I certainly hope so. I've sent the poster.
Great.
If I can just provide one point of clarification, um, when it says Julie B. Sotheby's, that's other employees as well with those. When I communicated with them, said those are the three. If you can just list their names.
Okay, so there were our other individual donations as well.
They're all pooled together in that.
The other outstanding amount is um, a collection of various different employees.
Oh, great to know. Well, we thank them as well, and, and we understand their, their decision to remain anonymous and, you know, certainly thank them.
They're all welcome to come to the concert. They know that.
Correct.
I wasn't here last meeting, and so this may have already been stated, but I just wanna thank Trustee Epstein for all she does.
Yes.
My pleasure.
Yes. And we did thank her last.
But I didn't, because I wasn't here.
Well, I, I will accept your um, your saying that, and I appreciate it, but if you can uh, say something to the weather gods, that's really. That's really what I need, David, okay?
That is absolutely what we need.
Fair enough.
I will work on that.
Alright.
I'm looking forward to having you all join us.
Thank you, Trustee Epstein, and all the Julie B. Sotheby employees. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eleven, considering authorizing the renewal of a Westchester County Department of Health Food Service Permit Application to operate a food service establishment at the Anthony J. Priscillo Community Center.
Whereas the Westchester County Department of Health Sanitary Code requires a food service permit be obtained from the Department of Health to operate a food service establishment, as whereas the AJP Community Center serves and operates a food service establishment, and would like to renew their application for such permit in order to comply with all the rules and regulations of the Department of Health, now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Senior Citizen Coordinator to apply for a renewal of a food service permit with, at the AJP Community Center, and to execute and deliver to the County Department of Health for and on behalf of the village, a renewal application for a permit to operate a food service establishment and to execute and deliver any and all documents which may be appropriate or desirable in connection therewith.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Some moved.
Second.
And, and I'm assuming this is because, I mean, I, I look, I only question this because we, we have a food service provider, but that's just, they're just for fooding.
They just bring it to us. We're the ones serving it.
Okay. Okay.
We serve, we serve.
Right, that's, and I know that we do also. Alright, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, just a couple of items. Our Rybrook birthday is this Saturday, June seventeenth, from twelve to four at Crawford Park. It's gonna be another, we hope to have another great event, and hopefully a great turnout from the community, but we're very much looking forward to it. We've been planning for it for months, and uh, we're very excited to, look forward to seeing all the community. Absolutely. The weather looks promising, so knock on wood.
Knock on wood.
Thanks to Trustee, thanks to Trustee Epstein. We have our, our first Music in the Park Event on June twenty-eighth. So uh, that's right around the corner as well. That's at seven P M. at Pine Ridge Park, and that's gonna be the Russ Davis Band. Um, prior to that, we're gonna have a thank you uh, to our various volunteers and our boards, commissions, committees for Nice Cream Sunday Social, that they've all been invited to, and uh, we look forward to thanking them for all their service, and then followed by the uh, uh, our first Music in the Park Event of the year. Um, there's currently four Music in the Park Events that are, um, that are booked, and we're gonna have information at the birthday for people to look at all the summer events that we have, and uh, we have it set up with a Q R code. People could just take a picture of it.
Right.
Get all our, our summer events that are coming out.
Oh, you did that.
Um, we're also going to have, um, we're also asking the community to help us identify people in the community and nominate people who uh, went, made extra, extraordinary efforts to help people during COVID and Hurricane Ida. So, you know, we really would like to recognize all those heroes who helped others and took the time to help the Rybrook residents. Um, you can nominate people that don't have to live in Rybrook, as long as they were helping Rybrook, helping the Rybrook residents in some way. So the application form is on, on our website, and if you go, we have it right at the top of the website on a banner. Uh, we, as soon as we sent the e, the first email out, we started getting, uh, we had applications by the next morning. So, you know, people, I think, um, appreciate what so many people did to help others during those events, so please help us to try to pull out all those names and get people to recommend, individuals to recommend, so that we can say thank you at a a barbecue event um, on July nineteenth. And the deadlines for those nominations is the end of this month, so we're looking for nominations by the end of, by June thirtieth. So we'll be sending out more communications on this, but we really want people to try to help us find those names, find those people that helped others in some way. That's all I have for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Chris. And I believe our next uh, meetings for the Board of Trustees are June twenty-seventh, where I will not be present. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. And then again on July eleventh. Thank you all, and have a good. What? And, yes, and this weekend, all the fathers out there in Rybrook, please have a very happy Father's Day.
Happy Father's Day.
And the village offices are closed on Monday?
No.
What?
No?
No.
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 We're still open on Monday.
No.